Know that she'll have to leave early. So I think we'll proceed immediately. Uh, and if I am correct, uh, but for uh, approving minutes, which maybe we'll move up earlier.
Early. So I think.
Hello? Oh, I've heard something in the background. I'm sorry. Uh, we can, uh, we can, uh, proceed without requiring Lee's vote on anything unless we need it for approving minutes. So why don't we start right in? First of all, uh, thank you all for coming and we'll, uh, do a roll call, although, uh, we, uh, we can all see each other. We need to do this for the record. So I will go around, uh, Robin Sherwood is present and Lee Good. Uh, and I am present. Wendy, uh, has notified us that she will be a bit late. So we do have a quorum and we have a visitor, Andrea Kinsley, who is, um, appearing on screen, uh, but is, uh, interested in watching us as, as a member of the public at this moment. So thank you all and Elizabeth, of course, for, uh, all of, all of what you do. So let me start in, uh, the first item, which I actually, uh, routinely speak with Robin, uh, in advance of this meeting and we were discussing. We do have a, an old business agenda item of park benches. But, uh, we all, uh, up for discussion right now have found that, uh, we really don't have a park bench project, uh, ready to proceed. The library, which was our primary locale is of course just starting construction. So, uh, I will open it for discussion, but, uh, propose that we remove this from the agenda going forward and revisit it in the future when it's, uh, when it's germane. Any comments or thoughts on that before we suggest?
Moving on. I have an update. They were actually able to get a beautiful piece of wood from the tree that came down. Um, it was massive, bigger than expected and in really good condition. So they think that we are absolutely going to be able to move forward with something great in the future with that piece that was saved.
Oh, thank you so much, Elizabeth. We were not aware of that. Uh, can you, uh, share with us what they did with it? Where is it?
So I know that the first truck came that came to get it couldn't get it because it was bigger than they thought. I think it's like, it's 12 feet and it was, it was massive around what they were able to keep. Um, and I believe it's being stored by Public Works.
Oh, marvelous. So we will touch base with them, uh, and, uh, see to it that, uh, that that is preserved. Uh, I looked into this, uh, as you all know, uh, prior to the Art Commission actually being set up a few years ago. Uh, and it will have to be stored. However, there is, uh, a, uh, a sawmill which can handle that specifically. Uh, it happens to be in New Hartford. Uh, but it requires a, a special kind of, uh, sawmill to, uh, cut that up, uh, uh, out of a whole tree. Uh, and so that's wonderful news. Let's, uh, keep that then as, um, I don't know, let's throw it out for discussion. What can we do with that? We want it to be, uh, uh, on our ongoing agenda, but there's nothing active we can do with it until, uh, uh, either the library or the tree are, are ready to be, uh, to receive a bench. Uh, any thoughts?
I'm curious, uh, as you know, uh, New Britain Museum has beautiful benches in their galleries. How did they find those artists to do those? And, uh, I think somewhere local, maybe all of them. Uh, so if we're now those, of course, are indoor benches and, uh, not maybe this kind of thing we're talking about, but.
Well, thank you, Lee.
That seem to be beautiful.
We could make inquiry. Uh, uh, I think the intent was not for, uh, uh, just for the commission to say, let's make a bench, but, uh, uh, if we have the material and, and the resources to, uh, indeed make this a call for artists. So, uh, perhaps you, Lee, or, uh, one of us could, um, inquire of the New Brit Museum. Uh, you may recall, I, uh, did some research. The Arnold Apparition in Boston also has some exquisite, uh, benches. Uh, and I spoke with, with the man, uh, who, who made them actually on their premise. He is not available to make them for us because he was an employee there, but, uh, but they could be shared uh, for some inspiration. They're very beautifully done and each is, uh, uh, has some designation on it, uh, for what it's for, what it's made from. So, uh, thank you, Lee. Why don't we look into that at the New Britain Museum?
Thank you.
Anything else on that topic?
I have a question, uh, actually for Elizabeth as the library director. Um, do you know yet the timeline as far as the rebuild on the library? Because of course, if that's where the bench will go at some point, I mean, I'm, is it correct to think a year or two out?
Sadly, yes. Currently the completion date is, um, May or June twenty twenty-five.
Okay.
Okay. Well, actually from, uh, uh, we learn all kinds of things from what I learned previously. Uh, the wood actually has to season for a year, uh, before it can be turned into a bench. So we just have to make sure that Public Works doesn't throw it out before then. Uh, but we'll, we'll follow that up.
It's too big for anybody to throw out, so I think we're very safe.
Okay, good. Well, the reason I mentioned that, not to, uh, digress too much. There was a beautiful tree on, on the property, uh, the front lawn of town hall, which originally we had hoped, uh, would be, um, uh, saved for, uh, benches in the center of town and, uh, uh, the DPW gave it to, uh, the Connecticut Highway Department and they took it away and, and got rid of it. So, uh, these things do happen. All right, uh, if, uh, there's no further, uh, discussion on that, let's, uh, move on to our next item. Which is, uh, the one percent set aside for public art. Uh, is, uh, as you know, uh, we brought this up previously. Uh, the, uh, uh, Development Authority for the town is uh, very supportive of this idea and wants to, um, incorporate it in the new, uh, uh, town plan, which of course would be, uh, subject to, um, a council review and adoption. Uh, we had previously discussed this and I asked if anyone had any uh, thoughts, suggestions or edits, uh, for, um, for the policy. So I'll throw it open for discussion now, uh, if anyone has any thoughts on that subject.
I have a question. So let's say this happens and there is this kind of money coming in. What guarantee do we have that they will let us be involved in deciding what the art is or where it is? Or that we have any say at all? I'm a pessimist about this.
Uh, that, that's very good. Uh, the way we're drafting it, uh, and, uh, I will circulate, uh, a new edited version I've been working on uh, for all the commissioners to review, uh, even before our next meeting. It's being drafted so that the Art Commission has the authority and it is a designated fund that can only be used by the Art Commission. So in other words, it's not funds, uh, as we see all of us happening at the state and federal level where funds get moved around from one department to another as they like. Uh, this is being drafted, uh, so that those funds are not available to any other project in town and they are to be administered by the Commission on the Arts.
Okay, well, let's just be cautious about this and it sounds like you are.
I think that's wise. We, we're, we're, uh, advancing it, uh, and with the support of the Development Authority, I might add, uh, which is, as, as you may know, seven, uh, commissioners, uh, in that, uh, commission who support it and, and their professional, uh, advisor firm on the outside. So, uh, that's how it's being drafted. When it gets into the hands of the political side, as you wisely say, Lee, uh, we need to be, uh, cautious and aware.
Oh, wow.
Other comment?
Yeah. I would just like to say that I did already, I think you're aware, I submitted my edits some time ago. So you have whatever edits I, I put in. I don't have it in front of me, but, uh, if you want to recirculate the document and yeah, as long as we put our, uh, our stamp on it and are proactive as I know you are Bob with, uh, the Development Authority, I think that'll help, uh, you know, make the town aware that this is something we're putting forth.
Well, in the way it's, uh, it's positioned and, uh, Andrea, if, if you are interested, we will, uh, we'll share it, uh, with you as well if you'd like. Uh, uh, the way it's, uh, uh, advanced is it's not to provide funds to the town generally, but that the funds provided for the arts will promote economic development, uh, and, uh, uh, invite, uh, both, uh, residents and visitors to come to the town because we will have more active arts and, uh, the underlying statistics, as you know, and I'll recirculate are that, uh, there is a very significant multiple on, uh, funds spent on the arts, uh, generating additional economic activity. So, and, uh, we were requested, I believe I shared with our commission, uh, whether, uh, uh, the town would be in the advance, uh, on this or there are other towns. There are actually twenty-seven towns in Connecticut that do have already some requirement or ordinance for set aside the funds for the arts from development. Uh, New Haven actually has, uh, uh, received and expended, uh, uh, I believe, uh, well over a million dollars on arts, uh, under this kind of program. So.
And do they have a commission like ours that, that, uh, decides?
They do. They do. Uh, and, uh, each of these towns. And, uh, when we come to another agenda item, we're going to talk about, uh, the fact that arts commissions are, uh, are, uh, expanding across, uh, our, our region. I'll come back to that in a moment. But yes, Lee, uh, they are all, uh, administered under the authority of some arts organization, uh, municipal organization. Whether they have a formal commission or it's a department, uh, we would have to look at that in detail, but thank you. Yep.
Be for being suspicious, but anyway, keep your eye on it, everybody.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's not ill-advised by any means. Uh, I, we all do.
Money does funny things.
Mm-hmm. Right, right. Uh, and it is not, uh, it would be very nice. It's not an extraordinary amount of money as it's being drafted, uh, a million dollars, uh, in, uh, in development, uh, funding, which, you know, the apartment buildings going up are certainly in the multimillion dollar, uh, budget range, uh, per, per million, uh, they would have to set aside ten thousand dollars, uh, uh, given over to a designated fund for the arts. Anything else on that subject? Okay, thank you. Moving on then. Our next, uh, oh, good. Our next agenda item is our, uh, our next field trip. Uh, and, oh, Wendy's joining us. Are you on with us, Wendy? You're, you're silent, but that's okay. Uh, our next agenda item, uh, and to bring you up to, uh, date, uh, Andrea, we have, uh, uh, as a organization, as a commission have, have done a number of field trips, uh, to, uh, get ideas for art around Bloomfield. That is, uh, where, uh, the town could benefit from art, um, installations. Uh, and we had discussed at our last meeting, uh, wanting to go to the Windsor Art Center, uh, to, uh, to visit there because they're a very lovely, small space, excuse me, art gallery, uh, uh, under the town's auspices. Uh, coincidentally, and just one might even say magically, uh, we were contacted about two weeks ago. Uh, I believe Elizabeth got the first, uh, contact, excuse me, from an intern assigned to the, uh, town of Windsor. A young lady, uh, who, uh, ultimately contacted me and said they are setting up an art commission, uh, in Windsor and asked uh, a number of very interesting questions, broad questions. How do we define art? Uh, who is included in our, uh, arts groups? And, uh, what the, uh, activity of our commission is? Uh, I, uh, responded and I will be, uh, happy after this meeting to share with you, uh, by, uh, email, uh, what my responses were to that. It was directed to me. So, uh, I thought it, it was germane. However, uh, I also in my response said, well, coincidentally, we were planning to come visit your, um, art center. And she said, that is actually not uh, owned and run by the, uh, commission, but is independent. It's a, a, a not-for-profit, uh, organization. But she gave me the contact information, uh, for how we could, uh, be in touch with the people who run it. And so I throw that out, uh, as, um, tee it up, so to speak, uh, that we have an invitation to, um, go to Windsor and, and visit. I believe our last discussion at this commission was, uh, some dates that we all might be, uh, available in the next, uh, month or so, uh, to, um, to go together, uh, to see that. So I throw that open for one comments and two, if any of you would like to, uh, uh, throw out some proposed dates.
Their current exhibit is two women. Oh, it's called Unveiled Silence. These are women from Iran who are showing their art. And I think that would be a wonderful one for us to see. And I don't know why Ms. Hines is disappearing.
Oh, oh, can you see me? I'm sorry.
Thank you.
There you go. Okay.
Anyway, uh, I, they're not open all the time, so we need to figure out when they are and go from there.
Well, uh, I, uh, again, as I often do, I request that each of you send me some, uh, some dates or, uh, uh, generally what days of the week you're available. I will, uh, uh, collate those and be in touch with their center uh, to match their schedule and, and let you all know. And, uh, if possible, we could even schedule something before our next meeting. Uh, any other thoughts, questions, suggestions on that? That, that just came to us out of, uh, out of, uh, the sky, so to speak.
I just would add, it's a great place. I actually went for the first time, um, around the holidays and, uh, there was a wonderful photography exhibit. And in addition to just the exhibit space area, even though it's not, you know, that large, but there are studios there, artists that rent studio space. So you can go into those as well. And it's just a really wonderful and unique, uh, art center. So it could give us all kinds of great ideas, not to mention just checking out the artwork. So yeah, I'm game for going, you know, anytime. Um, March.
Great.
Pretty flexible, too.
I, I will, I will share, uh, I believe I actually told this uh, little anecdote, uh, when I brought this up previously. Uh, I went to, uh, to the, uh, uh, center, the Windsor Center. Uh, oh, it's probably more than two years ago. Uh, actually, it was before we, we had set up our commission formally. Uh, and there was a, a woman, uh, who seemed to be in charge of the gallery at that time. I told her why I was visiting. And she said, oh my goodness, I've been a resident of Bloomfield for thirty years and I come here to experience art, uh, but I would love if we had something in Bloomfield. And, and she works at the Windsor Center, I mean, as a volunteer, uh, hoping that, uh, we might one day do something similarly. So, um, we'll come to, um, to that topic in, in just a few minutes as well. So, uh, I invite you all, please, on that subject to, uh, let me know your interest in, uh, in general availability and I will be in touch with them.
Is it in the evenings? Like when are we? Uh, I guess, what timeframes are you talking about? Like, obviously I work during the day, so I didn't know if we're talking evenings or we're talking weekends? Like when exactly?
Well, uh, we'll have to find out when they're open, uh, and, uh, uh, if possible, Wendy, uh, we'll try to get the most number of art commissioners, uh, uh, free during those times. Uh, I tend not to, uh, uh, go to, uh, these kinds of things myself, uh, in the evenings. Uh, I'm not even sure they are open evenings, but potentially on a weekend.
I don't mean to interrupt. Here's something I know.
Please.
Exhibition hours, Thursday, six to eight P M. Saturday, ten A M. to four. Uh, I don't know about Sundays. Anyway.
Okay. Well, uh, I will be in.
Maybe they're open on Fridays, but my guess is sort of like the West Hartford art, like they aren't, uh, open all week. And, uh, that, that we should find out.
Thank you, Lee. And, and I, I might add, if we're contacting them, uh, as, as between professional organizations, I, I'm sure it's possible, Wendy, that we might arrange a time that they're not generally open to the public, but we're meeting the, the people who manage it, uh, off hours so that we can, we can talk, uh, and not just kind of, uh, buttonhole them, you know, in the middle of, uh, of, of exhibit hours. So, uh, let, let's, uh, let's look at that. Thank you.
And I mean, if the daytime works for most of you, I don't, don't stop you from going. If daytime works, I can go another time. So if that, if that works better for you, for me, I can't go during the week in, in the daytime hours because.
Understood. Yes.
So, but I mean, don't hold it up. I can give you some dates, but if the three of you can go, you know, Lee, Robin and Bob, please feel free. You know what I mean? I don't want to hold up times to get in there. I prefer us to see it and move along versus trying to, to keep extending it month over month. So.
If for that matter, Wendy, is, uh, Robin has, has mentioned, uh, you can also, uh, go separately and privately on your own, just if you're interested to see it during the exhibit hours. Yeah.
One hundred percent.
Thank you.
No, I'm pretty free. Somebody has to drive, but.
Okay.
I'll take you.
Okay.
I will contact them to find out, uh, how we can arrange things. Uh, our next item is, uh, our proposed, uh, directory of artists. And, uh, again, we had circulated uh, for everyone and you were all, uh, good enough to, um, add your own, uh, items, uh, to that list. Uh, and, uh, uh, Ms. Andrea Kinsley was on my list. She happens to be a neighbor and, and an artist. And she was interested in, uh, in coming to our meeting. And, uh, do, uh, any of you have additional, uh, suggestions? I think Wendy, you were going to, um, do some work and perhaps you could, uh, let us know, uh, what progress you've made.
So I am finishing up a list. So I, I went out to the community forum site and Andrea, you may have seen it if you're on social media. I went on to the Bloomfield Community Forum and Bloomfield Neighbors Unite. And I basically asked, I think I, I emailed everybody the question that I asked to get that. So I am finishing tabulating that. So as we discussed in the last meeting, I just want like the name, a, a name of a contact. If the artist goes by, you know, because some artists are, are, you know, designed by X, Y, Z. And then either a email or a phone number. It didn't matter to me. I just asked for contact information, but I did that by instant message. So when I just said, okay, message me for more, some people just offered their stuff up right on the email. So I'm finishing tabulating that because I'm going to go to both sites. Um, I also did add a couple that I know that probably wouldn't respond on social media, but they are artists and maybe don't want to just broadcast themselves out on social media. So I will commit to getting that to the group next week. And I believe there's twelve to fifteen people who responded with various types of art. And you know, the way I presented it is we would like to, you know, embrace the art in town, but we would also like to recognize artists. So I think I sort of led myself to believe that we will initiate and get artists together or just start to bring it to light because I do think that that is what will help us as a commission gain more traction and get more momentum is if we do down the road, put something together where we just ask artists to come or, or just get a group or spotlight an artist, you know? We take on, you know, once a week for the next, you know, X amount of time, we just spotlight a artist and try to get that into the messenger. So we, you know, just create something that kind of generates a little bit more, um, Bloomfield artist stuff. Just getting people out there who would be willing. I mean, you know, I would definitely go to somebody, but I do have, I think it's twelve to fourteen people that I'm finishing just to make sure that I have contact information.
Marvelous.
Set, uh, a, a list of artists that I know in town. And I don't know that I got anything from you, Wendy, about uh, more information, email or anything.
You didn't get anything new. No, what I to the, to the group, what I had put out on the social media site, just so everyone knew what I had put up there on social media. So if a friend or somebody there said, hey, what is the arts commission doing? People weren't like, wait, what are you talking about? So it was just a request because we wanted to highlight the artists in Bloomfield. You know, we wanted to create some, uh, color, for lack of better words, around the artists in Bloomfield. So.
Well, I, uh, my list included a lot of artists.
Perfect.
Do I know them? Yes, maybe because they had a show at Lancaster or maybe I know them another way. The thought was perhaps I call each one to see if they're comfortable about my giving their email out. I'm not, I don't feel good about that. I would just like to give you their email.
That's fine.
Or not. I don't, I'm puzzled. And it, it seems overwhelming that I call twenty people to say that, okay, if I give your email and then they're saying why and what.
Yeah.
Nope. So, and I, I don't mind collecting them all, Lee, and then just reaching out as the Public Art Commission in just saying, you know, we would like to know if you would be okay with, you know, um, being on our listing. So I don't mind doing, coming up with an email that we do send. You know, the people that I solicited on social media obviously are okay with that, but even the list that all of you have, you know, we could just come up with an email that we send to those people and just say, hey, we're looking, would you like to be a part of this? If you would, that's great. If you wouldn't, then that's great.
The key thing, we need to tell them.
Yeah.
What we're doing. I, I recently had lunch with an artist friend who's lived in Bloomfield forever. Said, can I give your email? Why? And we need to be able to answer the why.
Exactly.
Because we're trying to get a way to notify artists in Bloomfield about what's happening. I said, there may be a show at the feeling house. Oh, she's interested. Help us make this easier.
Mm-hmm.
Or we should make it easier for you, Wendy. I don't know which way it goes, but.
Well, you make a very good point.
We'll figure out a way, Lee.
Lee, uh, uh, and, and I think we all know this, but we should formalize it, uh, that we, uh, and, uh, I personally, uh, throw it open to, to discussion, like your ideas, Wendy, of featuring artists and that kind of thing. But actually, one of the primary objectives, uh, you mentioned, Lee, is contacting artists, uh, for various, uh, calls for art. Various uh calls for art. So if we were doing park benches. Uh, we might send out a, a call for artists uh locally uh to participate, similarly with bus shelters or uh. Uh, i- in the future, uh, other projects that we come up with. So we'd like to, and we have no way uh currently. Of uh, uh, knowing if people are artists, except. The, the few that we each know uh and, and to have a, a call, so to speak. Uh, uh, so um, and inform them uh, and, and ask them to. Spread the word if we are having uh events. It's sort of a, a networking, but also a, a quasi-professional. Uh, uh, list of, of people in town. Uh, yes, uh, why don't we all uh. Send any suggestions we have for that uh to Wendy? And if you'd be good enough, Wendy, uh. Uh, I will forward to you uh all the collected um. Uh, directory we have so far and, and you could reach out to those people. Thank you.
How are we reaching out to them? I mean, we have a list.
I think email. I think the email.
What if you don't have their email?
Then I, then I don't know. Then depends on what they've given for a contact. So it's either going to be a call or it'll be an email depending on what we have for a contact.
Well, the ones on listed haven't given out a contact because they don't know anything about any of this. So.
Well, uh. Is to, you know, I think part of. Our job is to explain what we're about and what we're doing, which is the people, the friends and artists that I know. That's what I did. I didn't just blindly contact people and not say anything. I basically said, I'm working with the Bloomfield Public Art Commission and I basically describe what we're all about and what we're attempting to do. As simple as that. It's not complicated.
No, but let's then have kind of a statement that we're saying to these people. I don't know. I'm not trying to make this complicated, but um. There are probably twenty people on my list and uh, they should be contacted. I'm not going to call them. I don't.
Well, we'll find a way.
Yeah, maybe I have to.
I was gonna, I don't want to.
Find a way. We'll find a way.
Bring me.
I was so, I'm sorry. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. I didn't want to interrupt. I'm sorry. I know I'm, this is my first time um on the meeting, so I'm listening and. I was gonna ask, I definitely want to be part of this and I can help out as far as helping out, reaching some of the artists if you need me to, because I work with artists all the time. So I just wanted to say I don't have a problem calling, you know, some of the people or.
Yep.
Anyone, because I do that all the time. So, but I also have a list to provide to you as well, Wendy.
Oh, perfect.
With some names of artists I know personally, you know, in the area and other parts of the state.
Marvelous, Arshen. And, and uh, in a few moments, I'll, I'll perhaps ask each of you, Arshen and, and Andrea, if you'd like to. Uh, uh, make any comments or, or suggestions uh, 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 your interest in. In our o- organization. So thank you. Uh, and uh, we do tend to jump around, so I, I'll, I'll preview uh. Uh, two things. We are uh actually having two public events. Uh, in the next couple of months, uh, as we go through the agenda, we'll be discussing them. At which Lee and Wendy and everyone, uh, we are going to uh ask. Uh, uh, people to uh give us their uh names and whether they are interested in being contacted. Uh, and they are large public events. So we're trying to just kind of network uh one step at a time. Uh, but we will be asking people and hopefully. Uh, those events, by the way, will both be publicized. Uh, when we uh try to reach out to people, we will have a way to uh. Uh, uh, describe and express to them uh what we are doing and there'll be some awareness. So I, I will come back to that, but. Uh, other thoughts, discussion on, on the directory? The thank you, Wendy, for doing this. We will send you what we have.
Yes, you're welcome.
Okay.
I'd like to say I like Wendy's idea of highlighting artists, even if it's a little right up. I mean, again, you know, people have to give permission. That's a given. You know, but if they give permission and we say, yeah, we'd like to, you know, do a little blurb about you, even if it's just a. Brief thing in the messenger.
Yeah, quick and easy, just something to, I feel like that's part of what we are. As a public art commission, we want to generate interest. But also too, you have to, you have to grab their attention by offering something as well. And sometimes. Like you said, just a, a little blurb or our local artist, you know, work with John at the Messenger, you know, we're going to highlight an artist. Every two weeks, we want to have a spot where we can highlight a Bloomfield artist, you know, for whatever capacity, you know.
It was also really great P R for the Public Art Commission when Wendy posted that. I think a lot of you might have only heard about us maybe once when we started and it was just, it's like, oh yeah, we're here, we're, we are doing something. So. Wendy, I liked that aspect of it too.
Great. I, I will use that to segue to uh, a, uh. An additional agenda uh topic uh, we have on our agenda, what other. Things we're going to be doing before we uh tell you about the show that we already are planning. Uh. And uh, again, uh, fortuitously, and I guess our, our reputation is starting to spread. Uh, somewhat to, to Windsor and locally. Uh, I was contacted by uh. A woman, Meredith Johnson. I don't know if any of you know her. Uh, a very active. Uh, a woman in town and particularly active in the black community, uh, which she would self-identify and I tell you why. Uh, and she invited us uh to, as the commission, to appear uh at uh an event. Uh, next week, a week from uh tonight. Uh, it's being held at the Senior Center and of course it's open to the public if you uh all wish to uh come as well. Uh, to um, well, let me back up. I'll explain what they're doing. Uh, we are in Black History Month currently and on February fourteenth. Uh, there is uh a discussion at this event uh of a contest that is being held. Uh, at the uh, uh Bloomfield High School uh for a submission of essays. And also short videos and they have very specific parameters that they've uh provided for the students. To uh do a piece on what black history means to them or uh something related to that, of a black historical uh, uh topic. We have been invited as the Arts Commission uh to uh appear at this uh group. And to tell them uh about uh who we are and what we do in the Arts Commission. So as I was mentioning, Lee and everyone. Uh, this is an opportunity for us again to spread the word uh and it will be uh publicized. Uh, and the results of that uh meeting. Uh, when they select the winners uh in the essay and the video uh categories. Uh, that will be announced. Uh, we have invited, and I spoke with Meredith, I'll explain in a moment how I know her. Uh, that uh at an event we're planning in May, we would like to invite the winner uh of that contest to read their essay. Uh, she or he could uh read their essay publicly, uh, and she was thrilled. Uh, and that spreads the word through all of town. Uh, wh- what uh we are and what we are doing. As I said, I would uh. I gladly send you all uh the information. Uh, it is a public event and so you're welcome to. Attend as well and, and Robin and I uh have both uh committed to uh, uh, to being there. It, it is six to eight. P M. next Wednesday at the um, the Senior Center, which as you all know is part of the Leisure Services Building. They have their own uh. Facilities and room there. Uh, and so that is one way uh that we will get the word out. Uh, I happen to know uh Meredith because I sit on the um allocation committee. Of uh the Hartford Foundation, uh, which hands out uh, uh, grants uh in Bloomfield. We're in our third year uh now. Uh, and uh, all these things become ultimately related. Uh, when we finish discussing this briefly, uh, we'll tell you about uh our uh proposed show. Which is going to be in a building that the Bloomfield Fund uh actually. Uh, made grants to uh for uh, for renovations. So uh, any comments, questions or suggestions on this subject? This new topic about the um Black History Month uh, uh talk.
I think it's great. I think it's great. It's great publicity and it's a great way to sink it into our, our event. So, I think go for it.
Precisely. Well, thank you. I'll, oh, uh, Robin, yes?
Yeah, sorry for uh interrupting, but I have a question for you, Bob. Um. When you're there, and I will certainly attend as I told you earlier, but uh. Do you plan on making it a formal invitation that evening or does Meredith already know that we're interested in inviting the winning essay? Uh, writer?
She is running the event. I've spoken with her privately already and she has said, yes, she will. Uh, um, gladly have the, the winner speak, but uh, that's not a bad suggestion to incorporate in my. Very brief remarks. She's asked that we speak for five or ten minutes, telling people about the Art Commission uh who do not. Otherwise know, uh, and then we'll open it for questions and comments uh to the whole group. So I will add that to the list that we uh are inviting uh the winner. Uh, and that, I, I think will, will uh. Be well received uh and, and give us some, some uh credibility. Anything else? I'll use that to segue. Oh, oh, please, Robin. Yeah.
I just have to step away for a minute. I will be right back.
Oh, of course, of course. Uh. We uh had, our next agenda item actually is uh a, a proposed show. Uh, which we've told you about at our last meeting and has now taken uh real shape. Uh, I will report on it and throw it open for uh comments and discussion. Uh. We are planning uh, a, a, an arts festival, as it were, and I'll describe why we are calling it that in a minute. Uh, on May twelfth, to be held at the Oliver Philly House, which to remind you all. Uh, is on Doncaster Road, uh, across the street from the Doncaster Community. It is the older preserved building. Uh, and a colonial era building, actually. Uh, and uh, as I mentioned a few moments ago, these things are interconnecting. The Bloomfield Fund, unrelated to our art show in any way, but the Bloomfield Fund made two grants. Uh, to the administrators of that building, um, a group called the Ironwood Fund. Uh, for renovations to the building. Uh, and so uh, that's, they're, they're very friendly with us. Uh, we are going to have uh, a, a variety of arts over a, um, I'll call it a two and a half day uh weekend. It will be a Saturday and Sunday, but. Probably with an opening on a Friday afternoon as well. So the uh, uh, the twelfth, I believe, is a uh. Is the Sunday, so it will be the tenth, eleventh, twelfth. Uh. By prior disclosure, uh, I uh told you all that uh I will uh have my art, which is. Uh, collages and some sculptures uh in the show. The reason we uh did that. Rather than going out for a call for artists at this point is precisely what we've been discussing. We have no way of reaching out to. Bloomfield artists uh yet. And so uh, to prime the pump, as it were, uh, to have a show. Uh, I am uh, uh, providing my art. Uh, and uh, in addition. Uh, and this again links to my uh response to the Windsor uh Town Commission. Uh, we are uh also going to have two performances, one on each day, Saturday and Sunday, of live jazz. Uh, Tony Harrington, who is the uh Deputy Mayor of our town, and we have met with him personally, uh, actually just this day. Uh, is going to be performing with his group on uh Saturday. And uh. Walter Wardiac, who is a jazz musician uh and has a uh. A large group, the Connecticut Jazz Ensemble, uh, is going to perform on Sunday. And they both agreed. Uh, and we will be uh compensating them within our, our budget parameters. Uh, i- i- is a, is a group, as a commission. Uh, we do have a budget from the town, as you all recall, which we, we must spend by the end of June. Uh, and uh, so we will be having uh an art exhibit of uh collage and sculpture. Uh, and then uh jazz on Saturday and Sunday. Uh, Sunday happens to be Mother's Day. We did not know it at the time we set this up, but everyone has, has kind of agreed this would be a wonderful um. Destination for people to come to uh, uh, on Mother's Day afternoon, uh, after whatever they're doing brunch or whatever. Uh, and uh, it is open uh, to the public, free of charge. Uh, and uh, on Sunday, we will also be having a uh, uh, Connecticut poet. And I'll ask Robin to tell. Us all about uh her in a moment. And that would be the day we would have the essay winner uh read. Uh, her or his uh winning essay. So uh, again, defining arts as broadly as we can. Uh, to show that we won our active dynamic in inviting people. And along with that. We will have uh at that event, uh, all days, uh, signup sheets saying. Please uh leave your name. We'll ask all of you uh to advise us wh- what we should say, but basically, please leave your name if you're. Uh, interested in the arts in town. If we can contact you, give us your contact information. And so it's sort of a. A debut of an event to show uh that we uh actually are, are in existence and real and, and can put things on. And we're hoping and will announce that this is the first of a, of a, a series uh for the future. Of uh, of arts events uh that we'll be uh, uh putting on.
We did, but I have to leave. But uh, I think this is a great idea. Give me all kinds of information. Perhaps Doncaster. Can. We can promote this in big. I hate to say we might run a bus, but some of us are sort of old. But.
I think they would. I think they would.
I, I think one of the things about the Philly House, so many people want to see it.
Yep.
And the fact that you're, and we have so many people here who are interested in all kinds of music and art as well. Yes, I will promote that as best I can. Great to see you all. Good night.
Okay, thanks for joining us. Uh, still open for discussion, comment, feedback, suggestions. We're still shaping this. I. I state it like it's all a done deal, uh, but uh, for the fact of uh. A date and uh, the uh, people who will be appearing, uh, uh, we are open for. How it should go, what we should do. Robin, would you like to tell us all about the poet?
Well, all I can say, as she's just someone that I became aware of. I'm not, uh, I mean, I, I know her. She's a longtime Bloomfield resident. She's a recent, and she's been published, but she also has a book. Or a collection of poems that was recently published. So she's doing readings elsewhere and has kindly agreed to. Do a reading at our event and I'm also hoping that that means she'll, you know, do a little book signing as well. Um, but yes, she's, she's honored to be a part of this and uh. And will certainly, I think, add to the wonderful mix of art that we're doing, including the. Artwork and sculpture that you'll have, the music. So that's what I think is great about this. Um, what I. Um, I don't know that you uh mentioned the fact that we're going to call this the Found Art Festival. Um.
Thank you. I did not. Yeah.
Yeah, so I just wanted to make sure that we have a name for it and the found art connecting to the fact of your collage work. Um, and then I also just wanted to say real quick, because I know we're probably running short of time. Uh.
No, we still have a bit. Uh, uh, Lee previously said she had to leave early.
Oh, okay. Well, so we had the pleasure of meeting Tony Harrington, our Deputy Mayor and. Uh, a jazz singer and part of, and he basically. uh a jazz singer and part of, and he basically uh has a band that some of you may already be aware of, that performs in and around town. And so he too is going to be a part of this and he, you know, we met with him earlier today uh to just look at the space. So yeah, that's why we chose May, because of course, we're hoping the weather is, you know, pleasant, and this can be just, you know, a wonderful thing. And he'll help promote it as well. So I just wanted to mention that. So I think that's.
Thank you, Robin. And I I might add uh that uh uh e- everyone is e- e- excited uh about helping with this. And by that, I mean uh both uh musical groups uh who are are professionals and and do appear uh for significant fees have uh agreed as uh and they are, by uh by the way, uh uh both resident groups, uh Tony and and Walter Wardiac, both are longtime residents of the town, uh have agreed uh to uh uh charge us fees uh well below their uh normal uh charge as a service uh to the town and and the commission. So that's a very nice thing and and they will spread the word uh as well. Uh and I might add, um following what uh what Lee uh uh mentioned, uh that a part of the uh the name Found is uh relating to the building itself. Uh and I'm quite excited about this because if you drive by, uh everyone wonders what's in there. Uh it it looks like a very uh beautiful intact older building. Uh but the inside is only partially restored, which makes it kind of uh uh a a found type of uh e- environment as opposed to looking like a a polished gallery uh in the Lower East Side of New York. And I I I personally happen to like it very much. Uh it is a venue for that because it's showing that we are um, we're developing the arts in in town, not just uh coming in and and telling people, this is art. Uh and you you should uh you should look at it a certain way. Uh and and also uh the fact that we're uh having three different uh forms of art, uh the uh the uh solid art, I'll call it. Some people call it plastic art, uh the music and the poetry is a part of our mission. Uh to define arts as broadly as possible. Uh by uh community standards, by artistic standards, uh to invite uh people with different arts uh skills and backgrounds. So uh any comments, suggestions or discussion on that?
I would say that if you're going to recognize the individual um from the Black History Month, do not do it on Sunday. Do it on Saturday. And you just, yeah, I would just say because that, you know, Sunday is the day where they all spend and then it's Mother's Day on top of it. So church and Mother's Day, I don't feel that linking that from the Black History Month and then putting it on the Sunday will get uh the population of town that we're looking for to help celebrate that. So I would recommend doing that on Saturday afternoon or Saturday morning.
We're we're very fluid on that. Thank you, Wendy. We will make that change immediately. Uh the the only reason we uh have thought to group it together was the spoken uh parts will be on Sunday, but why don't we have the uh the essay on Saturday and the poetry on Sunday?
It'd be a nice way to to engage different parts of the town as well, just because you're you know, uh but yeah, Sundays, I know, just from the Lions Club, Sundays are days that we stay away from just in the town because most events are not hugely um participated in because Sundays are days that people kind of do their their thing between church and and family.
Church, church and and home. Thank you. We will make that change immediately. We have that fluidity. Yep. Uh I'd like to uh i- i- if you would like, and I uh I uh don't want to put you on the spot. You're welcome to say nothing, uh but uh Arshen, uh am I pronouncing that correctly? Like to tell us uh anything about your your being here uh this evening?
Yes, um my name is Arshina and I've um I've been a resident of Bloomfield for pretty much all my life. And I um I'm just interested in seeing I can be part of, you know, committee. Because I'm interested in arts. I've been involved in arts in different aspects of it um pretty much all my life as well. Um I'm an educator and also an arts coordinator, and I worked also as a talent scout many years. Um worked in film and film and um arts and TV. So I have a broad, you know, experience with working in different aspects of it and being a Bloomfield resident, I do see that, um as you said before, it's nice to bring in more programs and we, I'm not going to say we we lack programs, because I think there's a lot of talented people here in our city, our town. But just more exposure and just bringing more things to the town is what I'd like to see as well and to see how I could be maybe um contribute to helping out, to get more programs here and promote whatever uh we need.
Well, welcome. We we are delighted. Uh I was not aware you would be here this evening and we're we're thrilled to have uh uh more people uh involved and and uh I'll be blunt. We are looking for more commissioners. We have a small group. It wa- it was larger at one point and various uh con- conflict reasons, people could not uh uh attend, but uh welcome, Arshena. And
Yes.
Uh Andrea, would you like to mention anything?
Everybody, um Andrea Kinsley, thank you for inviting me, Bob, um to be part of this meeting. It's really exciting to think about like bringing, you know, encouraging artists to show their work in Bloomfield and have all kinds of events uh to support the arts. The arts make everything better. Um I'm an artist myself. I'm a photographer and I study jewelry design and I write. And I just am a huge advocate, you know, for arts. And it makes me very excited to help. I want to be part of uh helping bring more of that into the lives of people here in our beautiful town. So, thank you.
Well, thank you, Andrea. Welcome. And uh we will be in touch with both of you.
May I ask that both of our speakers state their addresses for the record?
Sure. My address, um Arshina Hines. My address is eighty-two Park Avenue, Bloomfield, CT oh six oh two.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And Andrea Kinsley, K I N S L E Y, uh fifty-six Gunmill Road, Bloomfield.
And uh Elizabeth, do we have uh um the email addresses uh for for them? I believe we did for Andrea. I did not know whether Arshina had shared hers.
Okay, if you could reach out to us via email, that would be great. You don't need to say that on the record. The only thing on the record you need to share is your address. Thank you.
The reason I I uh mentioned that and we will keep that uh and we do, uh by the way, our meetings are uh open to the public. Uh however, our communications uh uh amongst commissioners are are private. And I want to, uh we all want to reach out to you uh and be able to share the information we we discussed tonight, so.
Are private but subject to Freedom of Information Act law should somebody ask for them?
Of course. Yeah. Yeah. Uh anything else in terms of uh new business, suggestions, comments? Uh I believe we only have remaining to approve our approve our minutes of our meeting in January.
Uh may I just add uh to everyone here that we're certainly going to be needing help and volunteers for this arts festival. So anyone who wants to, you know, help be, you know, attend, not just attend, but be a docent or meet and greet. You know, that's, you know, once we get closer to the event and have all the logistics and program figured out in the timing, but it would be wonderful if, you know, all us commissioners were a part of this.
Thank you, Robin. Good suggestion. And we will uh similarly uh for each of the groups that we publicize this to uh uh let people know uh on our arts directory and and where we speak that uh we would love people to participate, not just be, you know, uh uh members of the audience. So. Okay, uh has everyone uh looked at our minutes of the January third uh meeting? And I ask if there are comments, suggestions or corrections? Okay. Uh may we have a motion from someone?
Motion to accept the meeting minutes from one, three, twenty-four.
Thank you, Wendy. A second, please?
I second the motion.
Thank you, Robin. And all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any nays? Okay, the minutes are approved and accepted. And with that, uh we have a lot of information to send out to all of you, including our two new uh hopeful uh members. And uh I will uh ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. I'm moving.
The second?
I second.
Thank you. There are only three of us.
I know, so.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Well, thank you all. And uh we will be in touch with all of you with all of this wonderful information. Have a good evening.
For attending, Andrea and Arshina. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you both. All of you.
Bye-bye.
Thank you, Elizabeth, as always.
Good evening, everyone.
Bye-bye.